I'd like to call to order the regularly scheduled council meeting of April fourteenth. Can we stand and for the prayer and pledge?
Roll call.
I'm sorry. You know, I was reading it too. Can we do the roll call first?
Simon says.
Mr. Fury.
I'm here.
Mr. McDermott.
Here.
Mrs. Stauffer.
Here.
Mr. Roden.
Here.
Mr. Sorese.
Here.
Mr. Scafidi.
Here.
Mr. Yates.
Here.
Now, let's stand. Pray and we'll do the pledge by Mrs. Stauffer.
We gather to make decisions for our community. May we use only our best skills in judgment, keeping ourselves impartial and neutral as we consider the merits and pitfalls of each matter that is placed before us, and always act in accordance with what is best for our, for our community and our fellow citizens. Amen.
Amen. (inaudible) United States of America, into the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any changes or corrections to the minutes from our March twenty-fourth meeting? Hearing none, the meeting stand is written. Are there any awards or presentations this evening?
There are none.
Thank you. Now, we're to audience participation. Shannon, do we have anybody on our list?
Yes. First, we have Bill Hahn and Mike Regal. Mike Regal.
Well, thank you, everyone. I'm Bill Hahn, a Twinsburg resident, and I'd like to thank this assembly and also the residents for listening in to our presentation on Relay for Life. This is going to be the fifteenth year of Relay for Life at our Twinsburg Tiger Stadium, along with Twinsburg residents and our friends in Macedonia. So, I'd like to introduce you to Mike Regal.
Regal, thank you. He's one of three persons who are organizing this for Twinsburg and Macedonia. If he'll make a presentation, then come back to me and I'll say a few words also. Thank you, Mike.
Good evening. I am Michael Regal Jr., and I'm one of the 2015 Twinsburg-Nordonia Relay for Life co-chairs. Like Bill had mentioned, we have been putting on this event for the last fifteen years, and in that time, we have raised over one million dollars towards cancer research and services just for Summit County. So, in order to continue that trend, we're just really looking to pack the track, as we're calling it this year, get as much community participation as we can. The past few years have been a little bit smaller than we're used to, so we'd like to get some of the people who maybe used to participate and have dropped off in the past few years to, you know, come back and really get involved again. So, a few ways to get involved is to form a team that would just involve getting friends, family, neighbors, anyone together, getting a team to come and join the event and walk, just participate. You can also volunteer the day of or any time beforehand. We can always use some help. Day of would be just registration or picking up trash, anything, anything that can always help us. And then, we always can just use people to come and have a good time, enjoy and celebrate. You know, we're always here to raise money and raise awareness for this disease that has affected so many of us. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
We really should mention the date, right? Saturday, June the sixth, starts at twelve noon, and it goes until twelve midnight. It used to be two days, but it's going to be just one, one day. And as everyone kind of knows, there's been a lot of progress made with the cancer. I want to cite just one example of a Twinsburg lady that you may know. Her name is Sally Schaefer, or was Sally Schaefer. Sally Schaefer, if you can visualize this, at the beginning of the event is a parade of cancer survivors. And Linda and I, my wife Linda and I, were sitting in the stands fifteen years ago, and there's Sally Schaefer, our friend, at the front of this group. She's a survivor. We went down and we asked her, "Sally, we've known you for years, didn't know you had cancer." And so, matter of fact, she said, "Yes, I did. I had breast cancer. That was years ago, and I just don't think about it anymore." At that very moment, Sally Schaefer, actually a lady who worked on our beautification committee also at the time, not only became a friend of ours, but became a hero of ours. So, that's just one example, maybe you know, of survivors. So, it's not only to raise money, residents, for the scourge on our lives and our friends' lives, because we've lost a family member a few years ago, and we've lost three very close friends, Linda and I. And so, that's kind of a sad, sad way to go through that. But how can you help? If you pass out the envelopes, I'd like to, you all take one of those and open that. Linda and I would like to make a suggestion, if we may. For the members of council and the mayor pro-cop and council clerk. Linda, my wife Linda and I would be honored to be on your team if you would so desire to put a team together. And you'll notice that I have my name on each one of those teams and also my wife Linda, with one restriction. We're willing to walk with every one of the teams, but we're not willing to run with every one of the teams. However, we would, we would appreciate it that if you could put a team together, that would be a wonderful way to do that, or if you know of someone who would be willing to put a team together. And we're making this presentation to Twinsburg City Council, the school board. Tomorrow night will be the township, and then we'll also make a presentation to the Macedonia City Council. So, thank you very much for listening. If there's any questions, this would be the time. Yes, Mr. Fury?
We talked the other day, you said there were some additions to your family. Could you, could you mention those while you're here?
Well, yes. Our daughter Suzanne, who now lives and teaches in Columbus, if that's what you're referring to, two weeks ago had twin boys. And so...
So, Hahn is now grandfather of twins from Twinsburg?
No, 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 no. The two boys are already calling me Bill. No, grandfather just sounds kind of old, so, no, that's, so that's, that's wonderful. No, they're doing well, and of course Linda's down there full-time. It used to be a night shift and a day shift, but I, I don't know. Does anyone here have twins? Okay.
Nope.
Someone on school board, one of the, I think one of the, someone on the school board has twins, but, so that was kind of nice to know.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Great presentation. You also, Mike, it's been a while since I've seen you. Good to see you again. I have to admit, I didn't recognize you. It's a, it's a great event and fifteen years of hard, hard work. I know that a lot of people have put a lot of heartfelt dedication into this, and it's good to see you back and, and involved and your entire family. So, nice to see you again. A great idea with the teams, too. Nice suggestion. Thank you.
Shannon, next person on the list?
Daisy Walker.
Good evening, Mayor, Mr. Maestros, council and staff. I'm Daisy Walker, Chair, Twinsburg Environmental Commission, and I just have a couple of things to read off for you. As you know, Earth Day is next Wednesday from nine until 1:00 p.m. And two hours after that event, two and a half hours, there will be a donation of a, there will be a donation of a tree ceremonial living garden, and it's tentative set for next Wednesday, as I said, April twenty-seventh, at 3:30 p.m. in the high school commons. The Twinsburg High School Administration and the High School Enviro Club, and these are the four students that you appointed with the environmental committee, and they will have a tree planted in memory of the high school students who have passed away. The memorial planting of the tree will give solace and refuge to the families to remember their child. So, the parents of the children will be invited, as well as council. You should be getting your invitation shortly. Mayor and staff should be getting yours, along with the environmental commission. With thoughts of comfort, peace and caring, the tree will be a living monument and legacy to our beloved students. The environmental commissioners, we assisted in securing a tree, and the tree would stand, maybe, I'm just guessing, about six to eight feet tall, and it's donated from Salvarino Brothers in Oakwood. Also, the environmental students, since they know Mr. Sorese, they did meet with him to talk to him regarding donating a plaque to honor the lives of their students. So, if you could just pencil in that date, next Wednesday, April twenty-second, 3:30 in the commons, and if it rains, it'll be that Friday at 3:30 in the commons. And last but not least, at our last council meeting, Mr. Yates, you talked about visiting a company on Enterprise. And the company, which is Techniform Group, which I call them, and they wanted to know how they could get involved in the city and if there were any upcoming projects that they would, that they can participate. And you made a recommendation that you said, you know, the environmental commission should contact the group. So, I went home and I'm thinking, council isn't on, I have to wait like another day so it could be on TV, and I forgot the name of the group. So, I got up early, ten o'clock, you were on, and you said Techniform Group. I go, got it. I immediately went to the company. I met Jason McIntyre. He was so willing to participate in any of the projects that the environmental commission had. And so, next week, being Earth Day, you know, we're already getting the apples, we're getting the juice boxes, and I'm thinking, we need bags, we need bags that says, you know, Earth Day, every day is Earth Day, sponsored by Techniform Group. They're donating two-hundred-and-fifty bags so we could give out to the people who come in. And, you know, plus, they're all, they, they have, Jason and four his colleagues are going to be there. They're going to volunteer from nine to one. They're going to donate an hour each, and they said, Daisy, we may stay for the whole thing, because we want to give out these packs, bags, we want to meet the residents, and whatever else you have for us. I said, will we have cleanup coming, maybe we can get some t-shirts? She said, we'll talk about that later. So, thank you so much. If there's anything you know about me, if you give me a name and an address, and if someone is willing, Seth, you're laughing, if someone is willing to help the beautiful, the clean city, the best city in Ohio, I will be there and I will contact anybody within reason, you know, that's legally that I could do, and they will donate. So, I thank each and every one of you for working with me and helping me and trusting me and having faith in me and confidence in me, because this is the best job that I have ever had in my life, and I thank you.
Thank you, Daisy. Daisy, you could be our official spokesperson.
I was going to say, you're going to be tough to beat. Who's up next?
Well done.
I spoke with Jason. He was just as excited about your, your conversation also.
There is no one further. Luckily, they don't have to...
Mrs. Williams, would you like to speak? Come on up, Mrs. Williams. That's okay.
Thank you. We have a new director for the Summit County Public Health, Donna Skoka, has been appointed the new director. Jean Nixon is retiring July first, so I wanted to make sure the board was aware of that council, and the mayor, I'm sure you know already. She has been working side-by-side with him for about the last ten years. So, it was a good transitional fit and good for us to discuss the pros and cons, if we were going to go outside or if we were going to use someone from within. So, we officially offered the job to her on Thursday. She signed the contract. Here's a copy of the article that was in the beacon, and I'll give it to Shannon, where you all can have it. And it's a good seamless move forward. Jean has done so much, but he hasn't been the same since he came back from Cuba. And the Cuba trip was a City of Akron hospitals, they toured the hospitals down there, they took some vital information, and the outreach from it, I think it kind of changed him, because Jean does a lot of, or he did a lot of Peace Corps type of things when he was younger. And he said that he wanted to take this opportunity with thirty-one years in public service to look at other options while he was still young enough, healthy enough, and still had the desire to serve. So, it wouldn't surprise me if we see him doing something with Cuba's borders opening, with Akron hospitals, that really wouldn't surprise me at all. And then, the TB outbreak that we recently had in the Akron schools, we were on top of that. There were ten different languages in this one elementary school, and that shows you the migration and the immigration that's going on in the greater Akron area now. So, we had to have ten different translators. There were some cultural things where the women could only be spoken to by women, and everyone at Summit County Public Health, as always, rose to the occasion. So, I wanted to make sure I brought you up to speed on that. And Beverly Warren will be sworn in as Kent State University's president, May first, at Kent State, so that's another big thing that's going on, that we're a part of with our extension, and we have the ministerial breakfast Wednesday. And, and it was very nice. And again, it's just another outreach to the community in Twinsburg, being right on point as we always are, and Constance does a fabulous job with it. So, I wanted to bring you up to date with those two things. And again, I apologize for coming in late. I just left another meeting running in. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheila. Good updates.
Thank you very much. Okay. Next, we'll go to committee reports, starting off with Mr. Scafidi.
Thank you, Mr. Fury. Good evening, everyone. Let me see what committee meant. The border zoning appeals met last week on the eighth of April, and there were two, two cases out there. First appeal was zero-three twenty-fifteen, and that was the Goddard School on Glenwood Boulevard, Glenwood Drive. They were looking for a thirty-foot front yard variance and a five-foot side yard variance for an addition that they'd like to do. The board approved that variance for zero, so it was unanimous. However, they need to go back to the planning commission for a vote. It, it went to planning, and then I believe the planning commission, I'm not sure who represents planning.
I do.
Do you, Bill? Do you recall, why did planning commission not vote on that, that appeal? For Goddard School?
There was an issue with the setback, and right now, the, to tell you the truth...
I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
Well, so, they want to add two thousand square feet.
Right.
And where they want to put it is like right on the edge of their border, and it's challenging to see if they're going to be able to put the construction equipment to build where they want to put this.
Okay.
Or a storm line, too, or sanitary.
Right. So, there's going to be a public, there's going to be a public hearing, and they're going to have to get a variance, but they don't, I think they're looking for other ways to get this done. They want to expand, because they want to fill a need for an after, after-school programs that, that they, in the area. But because of the way their lots set up, it's really challenging. They're going to take the fence down and put a gymnasium in so the kids can play, is really what it is, as well as have an area for after-school programs. So, but, but the issue is, it just doesn't fit the lot properly, so they have to do some additional research to get back to planning.
Well, they did go to BZA, and they did get their variance, so they'll be coming back to planning for, for their approval next. The next appeal was zero-four twenty-fifteen, and that was for a LED sign on Ravenna Road at the, at the church. And that was tabled by the board until their next meeting for additional information. Other than that, that was the end of that meeting, and my other committees have not met, so at this time, that's the end of my report.
Thank you. Mr. Yates?
Yes. The Community Relations Committee met on March twenty-sixth. It was a light turnout, but we had everyone but the town, well, the township in Reminderville, we're not, we're not present. However, there was a pretty full list of events that are going on. I'll try to run through them pretty quickly. The library has a whole list of events coming up. May thirty-first, there's a family, family fair that's going to occur from eleven to three. They're doing a bunch of renovations. They're putting in a creative lab at the library, so that's going to be going on there. There's Coffee for a Cause on April twenty-fifth. And then, one of the things that came up with the library is a need for tutor space. So, they're, they're trying to reach out to the community, the city, the district, to see if there's any way that they can have additional space for tutors, because they seem to be just kind of taking over the library, and there's, there was a lot of discussion about that, but that may come up again. The Chamber has a ton of events coming up. There's a women's, I guess the women's expo was very successful, the Status of Schools, which a lot of us attended, the Ramtech Open House, I think that occurred. That was a groundbreaking. It was on the thirty-first of March. April twenty-second, there's a three-chamber event luncheon. Destination Cleveland's going to be there. Let's see. The Business-to-Business Three-Chamber Events on May fourteenth, that's a great event. If you've never been to that, I typically attend that, and it's Solon, Aurora, and Twinsburg Chambers, but a lot of great businesses from the three communities, so it's a really good, it's a signature of Solon on May fourteenth. And then, and they've got their golf outing in June, and June twelfth, and then the Taste of Twinsburg, of course, is on June twentieth. The schools basically are trying to get ready for commencement, and that's May thirty-first. A lot of discussion regarding Common Core and the park testing. And right now, the big thing that's being discussed with schools, they're redoing the stadium, so they've got new turf going in, some renovations going on there, so I know the board and the administration's been working hard on trying to figure that out. All right. And then, let's see. The, the CIC is a Community Improvement Corp. that the, the city formed, and there's going to be a meeting Thursday at seven-thirty a.m. at the Twinsburg Performing Arts Building. We're going to be having some office space there, so we're going to be talking about how to organize that space. We're going to provide, if there's, it's an open meeting, if residents wants to come and ask questions about the CIC, we're providing an update as to what's going on with the redevelopment project downtown, which is primarily the southeast quadrant of the square. So, just for the residents that do want to attend, that's at seven-thirty a.m. this Thursday. I attended at Kent State, the original campus here, a community ministerial breakfast, and we had, it was a great turnout. We had pastors from all the local churches there. It was a nice event where the university and our church, our faith-based community interacted, with some really good discussion. They got a really good idea of what Kent State is doing and what they're trying to do, and posed a lot of questions regarding how the faith-based community could help Kent State interact with, with kids, to help them. So, it was, it was a really good event, well-attended. Let's see, we, earlier this evening, we had a, another public meeting regarding the golf course clubhouse, so this is just more dialogue regarding the design of that clubhouse. I think the site's been pretty much located, it was just more of, we had more of a discussion regarding, I guess, wishes and needs regarding the, the interior design. Let's see, this Sunday, Witch Witch, which is a new sandwich place that's opened up in the Fitness Center, there's also one in Solon, is doing a charity event where they're going to, they've got their staff from both of the locations coming to the Twinsburg Fitness Center, and they're going to make as many sandwiches as they can in a couple-hour period, peanut butter and jelly sandwiches. So, I was contacted to see what can we do with a thousand peanut butter and jelly sandwiches, so I'm also spreading this to the community, that there's a couple of, of outreach programs that I'm involved with, and I've reached out to them. I know one of them will take all of them, but we're trying to find somewhere a little more local, so if you know of anyone, just contact me or get in touch with Witch Witch, because Sunday night, there's going to be a thousand peanut butter and jelly sandwiches available to distribute somewhere. And then, lastly, if, unless you're driving around this town with blinders on, there's, there's a mayoral campaign going on for our primary. Next Tuesday, or next Wednesday night, at RBC, six-thirty, there's a candidate night where all of the candidates will be there. It'll be moderated by Andy Shank from the Bulletin. There'll be questions and answers provided by the candidate, so I encourage anyone who is researching and trying to get more information regarding all of us to, to show up to that. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Mr. Yates. Mr. McDermott?
I have no report this evening. None of my committees have met since the last meeting.
Thank you. The Twinsburg Tax Incentive Review Board met on March twenty-sixth. The board is comprised of people from the county, local business people, the school system, and what we do is we review the TOP agreements, which is an occupancy program. So, if you bring a business into Twinsburg and occupy an existing building, we have a way to abate some of your, your income tax, which, which directly affects the city. And if you, we have community reinvestment agreements also, or CRA agreements, that if you add on to an existing building or build a new building, we work on a, some sort of a property tax abatement. All of these agreements are passed by council and reviewed annually to make sure that the people that committed to bring those jobs and that money to the city are living up to their commitment, as we will live up to ours. This evening, we'll have Resolution forty-nine, we'll cover the CRA agreements. We're making an amendment to one company that, that wasn't quite hitting the marks after a few years, so we're reducing it, and then the TOP agreements will be in Resolution fifty-one. This is, this committee only meets once a year again, just to review those incentive agreements, which comprise in excess of eighty million dollars of revenue to the city of Twinsburg, eighty million dollars in income tax salaries that are taxed for the, for the city of Twinsburg. I attended a planning commission meeting on the sixth of April. There are four items on the agenda. Fox Hollow is the new housing cul-de-sac that comprises of twenty-three lots next to St. Cosmos and Damien off of Ravenna Road. The subdivision, their final plats and site plan were approved unanimously. They also asked for a lot split for a portion of that to be set aside for the summit soil and water, separate from the homeowners agreement for, for a basin, and that was also passed unanimously. Did a Geis property for Merka Abrasives, which is a new company that's coming to Twinsburg, it has thirteen thousand square feet on Edison, and they are setting up the building for room for expansion. This was a final site plan approval, again, it was passed unanimously. And then, previously, we discussed the Goddard presentation, where they want to add off of Glenwood a couple thousand square feet to their existing facility. Mr. Sorese, or Scafidi, excuse me, Italians. Mr. Scafidi had mentioned that they had gotten their variance, so they'll be coming back to planning at our next meeting, which is Monday, April twenty-second. Also, I had an opportunity to represent the city at the Chamber of Commerce meeting on the April, on April eighth. Just gave an update of what's going on in the city from a council perspective and answered any questions for the board members. And there'll be a Park and Rec Committee meeting next Thursday, the twenty-third. It'll be at City Hall, and that meeting will start at six p.m. So, and that's all I have this evening. Thank you. Mr. Roden?
Thank you. I'm going to try to give justice to what Daisy's already talked about, but the Environmental Commission met this past Thursday, and Earth Day again is April twenty-second, from nine a.m. to one p.m. at the Fitness Center. In honor of the forty-fifth anniversary of Earth Day, the City of Twinsburg Environmental Commission is planning an educational event that will focus on the importance of pollinators, bees, butterflies and birds. Displays and donations of native plants from Coleman's Greenhouse, assorted box, juice boxes from Burger King and Cracker Barrel, and assorted apples from Giant Eagle will be there, as well as the two-hundred-and-fifty Earth Day bags from Techniform Group that was, they'll give out to the attendees. So, it should be a great new event for the city. I'm excited to, you know, see it go off, and I think it'll be a great event, so please join us. So, uh, it should be a great new event for the city. I'm excited to, you know, see it go off, and, uh, I think it'll be a great event, so please join us. Um, the other event that is, uh, taking place, and we have calls out to Lowe's and Home, uh, Home Depot, um, in Aurora and Macedonia, is requesting flowers and plants for the sprouting gardeners. Uh, that is the, uh, program for young children who want to get involved and actually, uh, work, uh, at, at one of the plots down in the, uh, community gardens and, uh, plant flowers or, uh, vegetables and, and really learn to cultivate the, the, um, the ground. So, uh, for more information, uh, regarding volunteering, please contact the Environmental Commission at the Envir, at the, uh, at City Hall here. So, uh, that's it for me today. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Serae?
Thank you. The, uh, Twins Day Committee met on, uh, Wednesday, April first, and things are moving along for this year's festival. Um, uh, they're, the planning is going real well, really well, and the, um, they're trying to really do a big push this year because it's the fortieth anniversary of the event. Um, also, the Charter Review Oversight Committee will meet April twenty-seventh at seven p.m. here at City Hall. And, um, I too was at the ministerial breakfast at Kent State, and I wanted to thank Dr. Long, Longmire for her invitation. Uh, and as Mr. Yates said, it was a very, um, interesting, um, event, and learned a lot about KSU and got to meet with a lot of the different ministers, and, um, it was, it was a, a good morning spent, um, just, uh, meeting and talking with people and learning more about Kent State and their programs and their staff. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Stauffer?
Um, yes, I, my committees did not meet. I do have a ARB meeting scheduled for this Thursday, April sixteenth, at five-thirty here at the Government Center. Um, there's quite a few items on the agenda, so it should be a good meeting if anyone's interested in attending.
Thank you, Mrs. Stauffer. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Fury, and good evening, everybody. Um, I'm just sitting here reflecting how quickly time goes. We heard that the Relay for Life is in their fifteenth year coming up, and I, I love the theme that they have, Pack the Track. I think that's going to really, uh, get some enthusiasm going. It's a great organization, a great charity, so I hope that you'll consider walking the track on, uh, June sixth. Also, fifteen years for Relay for Life, and Mr. Yates just mentioned this briefly, sixteen years for the Coffee for a Cause. And I, I just, I couldn't even believe it because I remember when Laura was starting that, uh, that event. It really is a nice, a good event. This raises, um, money for aluminum cans for burned children, and that's where that, the proceeds go for that event. So if you're not doing anything on Saturday, April twenty-fifth, that's coming up this Saturday from six forty-five to nine-thirty p.m., stop in and see what's going on. The high school kids do an awesome job. They present a lot of their artistic work and, um, poems, songs, every, everything imaginable. So, again, fifteen years for Relay and sixteen years for Coffee for a Cause. Um, time sure marches on, but hope to see you at those events. Some good news from Summit Metro Parks. As we know, the Nature Center will be opening up May twenty-first. But they did announce that they have a new path, and it's the, um, um, it's, the new path is a quarter-mile loop that's o, over there by the new Nature Center, and it will be included in the Spree for All this year. And the Spree for All, that means people of all abilities. There aren't too many of these types of paths throughout our area, so this is going to really be a great, great, um, uh, nice amenity for us to have here in the city of Twinsburg. And this path will be included in their Spree for All, which runs in May and June. Again, this one is for people of all abilities. The Maple Loop Trail is the name of it, and it's right by the Nature Center over there. It's the Nature Center opening on May twenty-first. So if you're out and you want to take a walk, that's the place to go, and I hope you join that Spree for All, you get some exercise and, and get to see all of the parks in Summit County. Also, Summit County is going to be celebrating its one hundred and seventy-fifth birthday. So they're doing lots of things throughout this year to celebrate their one hundred and seventy-fifth anniversary. And one of the things they're doing is they're going to have a Spotlight Community. It started in March, but Twinsburg's turn is coming up on, let me look at the date here, just so I make sure I have the right thing, the week of May eleventh. Monday, May eleventh, will be Twinsburg Week. We will be highlighted on the Summit County website, and we will be going to Summit County Council Meeting to receive a proclamation recognizing our part in the anniversary for Summit County. Again, one hundred and seventy-fifth anniversary throughout the year. They'll be having lots of events, and I'll make sure that I'll keep you informed of those things that you can attend. Um, here's one thing that you can attend. Every year, we're invited to this. This is a open house at Cleveland Water. It's at the Garrett A. Morgan Water Treatment Plant on West Forty-Fifth Street in Cleveland, Ohio. It's Saturday, May ninth, from ten to four o'clock. It's open to you, to your family. You can come in and learn how they deliver, and they keep quality water, uh, it, drinking water for us here in the Cleveland area. And it's, it's really kind of an interesting place to go visit. So again, this is Cleveland Water Treatment Plant at West Forty-Fifth in Cleveland, Saturday, May ninth, ten to four. Now, I'm losing my voice, Seth. Um, we had another nice letter from one of our residents about a response for, for our Twinsburg Fire Department. I'll just read briefly. Saturday, March twenty-first, "My ex-husband was on the way to the ER with our twelve-year-old son, Jackson, when he knows he stopped breathing. He pulled into your fire station and laid on the car horn, and you immediately," meaning the personnel there, "came running out to help, scooped our son out of the van, and worked until he started breathing again." What, what a wonderful, amazing story for this family and for this young man, and there's a big thank you to our Twinsburg Fire Department in that letter. So, nice work again, and congratulations to our personnel. With that, we can move to our, uh, finance report from Karen House.
Good evening, everyone. Um, we do have our first cash advance from Regional Income Tax Agency for the month of April, and I'll give a full report at the second council meeting as we'll have our, uh, total collections for the month of April. But thus far, we have one million, two hundred and eighty-five thousand, five ninety-one compared to last year. We had one million, five hundred and fifty-eight thousand, two fifty-six. Uh, in comparison to the two years, two thousand and fifteen over two thousand and fourteen, we are down by seventeen point five percent, or two hundred and seventy-two thousand, six sixty-four. I'm also wanted to update you and let you know that the last time we had all our assets appraised, uh, was about nine years ago. So it's that time again. I kind of discussed that briefly in doing the budget hearings. And so I've just gotten, I received a quote, so I'm gonna be having our legal department, Dave Maitos, review the contract just to make sure everything is, uh, okay as far as the wording, et cetera, and I'll present that information to you, um, at the next council meeting. Uh, we, I do have a meeting tomorrow with Perry and Associates, who will begin starting the audit finally with the questionnaires. And again, once they come in tomorrow, I'll be distributing to Shannon for all of you to complete the questionnaire. Uh, so please, as I say every year, please get it back as soon as your time permits. I greatly appreciate it. And that's all I have to report.
Thank you, Karen. Chief Noga?
Good evening. During the month of March, the City of Twinsburg Communications Center generated two thousand, three hundred and sixteen calls for service among the Twinsburg Police and Fire Departments and the Reminderville Police and Fire Departments. The total call count for the year is six thousand, seven hundred and forty-seven. Twinsburg police officers arrested and/or cited one hundred and thirty-two suspects into court on one hundred and fifty-one different counts. Twinsburg officers issued two hundred and forty-seven written warnings and nine parking citations. Officers investigated twenty-eight traffic crashes, of which three were injury crashes, six were on private property, and none were fatal. Uh, I would like to take this opportunity to recognize our communications center. Uh, this week is National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. Uh, this is a, a week that's celebrated annually in April, that recognizes, um, you know, what we term dispatchers, but their job really encompasses so much more now. There are really more communication specialists. Those folks who are on the, uh, on the phones and on the radio in our communications center, uh, most of our residents, their first contact is with our staff, and, um, very, very proud of the work that they do. It's a hard job. Um, they have to be able to do three, four, or five things at once, and it takes a very special type of, uh, person to be able to do that job. So this week is set to recognize, uh, the work that they do. On Sunday, April nineteenth, the Summit County Emergency Management Associate, uh, Agency is hosting their Summit County Telecommunications Recognition Dinner. Um, Chief Morgan and I were invited to emcee the event, so we'll be taking our comedy act on the road, and, uh, hopefully, we're entertaining for all that attend. So if you have the opportunity to see any of our dispatchers this week, please congratulate them, and, um, again, know that the work that they do, while sometimes goes unrecognized, really deserves a week like this for them to be recognized. So that's my report. Thank you.
Chief, I, I would just like to add to that. Absolutely, congratulations to all of our dispatchers. They, uh, do an awesome job down there. Over the years, we've heard many of the stories and their accomplishments, and, and, uh, they certainly work long and hard hours, so we appreciate everything they do. I do have a question on a personal note. Uh, Jennifer, is she involved with Coffee for a Cause this year? I know, uh-huh.
Uh, yes, and, uh, the whole Noga family is involved. I'll be doing the sound for the event, and Beth will be doing stage managing and working backstage with the act. So, yeah, we're really looking forward to this, to Saturday. It's gonna, that Saturday, it's gonna be a really great event.
Good.
I'm not sure what Jennifer's doing at. She, she's, uh, kind of kept it under wraps, I think, to be a surprise.
Okay, excellent. Well, thank you. Chief Morgan?
Good evening. Uh, during the month of, month of March, uh, the Fire Department responded to two hundred and seven calls for service, uh, compared to, uh, a hundred and seventy-three in March of last year. Uh, so far this year, uh, we've responded to six hundred and forty-eight calls. That's an eighteen percent increase over where we were this point last year. Also marks the fourth month, the fourth month in a row that we've been over two hundred calls, uh, which is the first time that's happened in the history of the Fire Department here in Twinsburg. A couple, uh, of the notable events, um, Mayor already referred to, uh, the child that, uh, not breathing on the Station One apron. Uh, he was, uh, transported to the hospital, um, uh, treated prop, uh, appropriately, and, uh, I'm glad to say he was able to visit the station the following Sunday, um, to thank the crew. Also, uh, on the twenty-fourth, uh, we went to Chamberlain Road for an impaired driver who not only drove through his own garage, uh, but he backed across the street and into the front of a, a house across the street.
Oh, my.
Um, the driver was treated and evaluated at the hospital. Um, Fire Department personnel did have to put in, uh, structural shoring in both structures to help, uh, stabilize them as they were both compromised by the impact of the vehicle. Uh, on the twenty-fifth, we spent three hours in Macedonia helping them with a, uh, commercial structure fire on Freeway Drive. Unfortunately, there were no injuries in that as well. Uh, and on the twenty-eighth, we had a structure fire on Liberty Road in the township, uh, a house fire over there. Uh, the resident was treated for smoke inhalation on the scene. Uh, we received, uh, mutual aid from Aurora, Solon, Reminderville, and Oakwood during the course of that call. And, uh, while we were there, we helped use those mutual aid, uh, companies to, um, address two additional medical calls while we were there at the house fire. So that was a busy Saturday morning. Uh, during, in fire prevention, during the March, uh, we completed eighty-four inspections. Uh, there are none, uh, past due at this point. Uh, during the, the month of March, we opened six fire investigations, and all six of those were also closed during the course of the month. We had sixty-nine training events, and, uh, totaling about two hundred and sixty hours of training for personnel during the, uh, the, the month of March as well. And, uh, finally, uh, on the Fourth of April, we did our monthly siren test. Uh, unfortunately, I have to report there was one, uh, siren that failed to work. That's the one at twenty-one, ten East War Road. Uh, unfortunately, uh, we've not been able to get it repaired yet because we can't get close enough with the construction at the Chrysler Site, uh, and the soft ground, and it was snow. Uh, the Service Department hasn't been able to get there, but there are plans in place that that should be repaired in the near future. Um, and that completes my report for tonight.
Thank you, Chief. Our next report will be from Chris Campbell, Public Works.
Good evening, Council. Well, our, uh, Service Department employees are back from winter shifts. Um, and I, I have some final numbers on the winter operations. Uh, we completed twenty-ninety, uh, snow and ice events. Uh, they applied seven thousand, four hundred tons of salt, uh, twenty-eight thousand, five hundred gallons of brine, and the crews drove over sixty-two thousand miles. So it was a, is a pretty busy winter. Uh, actually, a little bit lighter than last year. Uh, last year, they applied nine thousand tons of salt, so, um, a little bit, a lot cold. It was, you know, a lot of cold, but, uh, they were able to manage, uh, those, uh, snow events pretty well, so. They got that behind them. They came back to shifts. They started, uh, right in on the, uh, branch chipping. Branch chipping has been completed, and our next, uh, branch chipping will take place next on Monday, May the Fourth. So we're gonna go with that program through October, and it'll always begin on the first Monday of each month. Other work, uh, includes pothole patching. Um, crews are over fourteen thousand, five hundred potholes for the year. It was, it was a pretty tough year. Um, the, uh, hot mix plants did open up early, and so we've been able to get that product. So any, any work they do on these potholes now should, uh, last quite a bit longer than what it does in the wintertime. So that's, that's good news there. Um, street sweeping has started. Uh, they've been out there almost, almost two weeks, and, uh, they're probably twenty to twenty-five percent complete with that program. A lot of, a lot of debris on the roads. Um, normally, in the course of a day, they, they will, uh, dump that, that sweeper once it fills with debris, uh, once, once a day. Uh, they're up to five times a day right now, so. The roads are really, you know, they're really, uh, really dirty right now, but they are working through that route. They've got most of the mains done, so they'll, they'll go into the neighborhoods, so that should speed, speed the process up. Um, litter, litter removal, they've gone through the city twice. Um, actually, that program's going pretty well. We, we think, uh, that we're seeing less, less litter because of the new containers that Waste Management's using. Uh, those seem to really hold the garbage in, in the container, so that's going pretty well. Storm checks, we're doing the, the storm checks. Uh, we've done that twice, so those areas look good. And, um, other than that, they're preparing the athletic fields for play, uh, getting them ready for play, but at the same time, we're trying to make some upgrades to the fields. Uh, we're pretty, uh, pretty pleased with, with the results of that. And then this year, we're adding, uh, some work at all of the trails. Uh, we're doing an inspection of all the trails, seeing some of the natural trails that have, uh, different, uh, that, you know, they're not paved. It's natural. So we're, we're looking at improving those, whether it's with grindings or, or mulch or something else. So, uh, we're starting that work this year, and, um, and then all the other regular work that we do, so. It's, it started off busy, and, but the crews are doing pretty well. And that's my report.
Chris, I have a question. That new mix you were testing out did not work out as well as anticipated?
No, we, we tried a pothole where, a pothole patch material where it was a, uh, it was a hot material, but you, you, it was, uh, they were bags of material that you threw into a hopper, mixed it, prepared it. But we had limited success early, but it, it just hasn't proved to be the answer. So we're gonna keep working on that. There's other machines out there that we're gonna try.
The person that figures that one out.
Yeah, they're gonna make a lot of money, so. But we will stay on it.
Great, thank you. Jim Roberts, Glenn Eagles?
Good evening, Council. The golf course opened up on March thirty-first and came out of winter very good considering the harsh conditions that we had in January and February. Grief update on the renovations that took place on the course last fall. Contractor will be back to address any punch list items that need completed. The areas that were seeded late, such as the driving range, putting green, and one and two tee complexes are going to require additional seed and work from the contractor. These areas will take time to establish before we can open them up for ply and allow for equipment use on a consistent basis. No timeframe has been determined yet when these areas will be in playable condition. A lot will depend on weather and when the contractor finishes their work. Winter maintenance is complete, and in the last several weeks, we have been preparing the course for ply. Some of these items include putting the flags, benches, and tee markers out on the golf course, picking up branches and trash, mowing and maintaining greens, tees, and fairways, cleaning off catch basins, and making drainage repairs, also maintaining the bunkers. Also, with the help from the Service Department, a lot of poor-conditioned trees were Also, with the help from the Service Department, a lot of poor-conditioned trees were removed on Holds One, Sixteen, and Seventeen. Hold Seventeen is very extensive and is an area that we'll be working on throughout the year. What we're trying to accomplish is to bring in more light and sun into those areas, as well as some aesthetics, and help dry up those areas too as well. Some of the seasonal staff has started and are being trained. We should be fully staffed in the next couple of weeks when school lets out. And lastly, some customers have asked me when they've been up at the parking lot at Glen Eagles, there's some orange markings in the clubhouse parking lot, and those are for soil borings and pavement cores for the proposed clubhouse, which are scheduled to be done next week. And that's what those markings are for in the lot. And that concludes my report.
Excellent, thank you. I only have one last announcement, and we already talked about this this evening, but I would like to remind everybody again. April twenty-second at six-thirty at RB Chamberlain is candidate night. Very important evening. It's a time for everybody to come out, ask, get your questions answered, get to know the candidates. And again, we're expecting a pretty big crowd because we've moved it to RB Chamberlain instead of having it here. It should be very interesting. April twenty-second, six-thirty. I hope, I hope you'll be there. Thank you. That's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Mr. Finch wasn't on the list? Okay. It's, it's all right, sir. I just, I'm used to your consistency, so, thank you. All right. With the reports done, we'll move to our legislation. First Resolution Twelve, two thousand and fifteen, we're going to pass over that tonight. They're still working on an agreement with Twins Days. So first, we'll have Ordinance Thirty-Six, two thousand and fifteen.
An ordinance approving the recodification, editing, and inclusion of certain ordinances as part of the various component codes of the codified ordinances of Twinsburg, Ohio.
I move that we adopt Ordinance Thirty-Six, two thousand and fifteen. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Yates seconds. Discussion. Ordinance Thirty-Six, two thousand and fifteen is an annual maintenance of putting the ordinances and resolutions and changes to our, our codified ordinances in and having it consolidated so that we can update those books, so. If there's no other discussion, Shannon, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Sorese?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Okay. Ordinance Thirty-Six, two thousand and fifteen passes seven-zero. Ordinance Forty-Seven, two thousand and fifteen.
An ordinance accepting the bid of Fabrizi Trucking and Paving Company for the two thousand and fifteen Chamberlain Sanitary Sewer and Sidewalk Project and declaring an emergency.
Okay. I make a motion that we suspend the rules on Ordinance Forty-Seven, two thousand and fifteen. Declare it, put it on its third and final reading and declare it an emergency. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Sorese seconds the emergency. Discussion for the emergency?
Just time sensitive so we can get the project going, you know? People will be able to enjoy it this summer if we get it done.
Thank you, Mayor. Any other discussion on the emergency? Shannon, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Sorese?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Okay. The emergency passes seven-zero, so now I'd like to make a motion that we adopt as an emergency, Ordinance Forty-Seven, two thousand and fifteen. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. McDermott seconds. Discussion on the ordinance?
Uh, just a reminder that the City of Twinsburg received money for this project. I'm on the wrong one.
It's Ohio Public Works. This is the, uh,
Yes.
Fabrizi Trucking Paving for the Sanitary Sewers and Sidewalk Program?
Yeah, you're right. And I, I'm looking at the wrong one here. Sorry about that. But another very important project.
Total five, total is five hundred and fifty-eight thousand,
It is.
of which we're getting three hundred thousand, uh, in Ohio, on Ohio Public Works.
Ohio Public Works.
So. Are there any?
Sorry, I was looking at the sidewalk project.
That's okay. You can have it.
Got it.
Shannon, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Sorese?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Okay. Ordinance Forty-Seven, two thousand and fifteen passes as an emergency, seven-zero. Ordinance Forty-Eight, two thousand and fifteen.
An ordinance amending the current year appropriations for the various general revenue accounts as established in Ordinance Twenty-Four, two thousand and fifteen, the appropriation ordinance of the City of Twinsburg for the year two thousand and fifteen and declaring an emergency.
Okay. I make a motion that we place Ordinance Forty-Eight, two thousand and fifteen on its third and final reading and declare it an emergency. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. McDermott seconds. Discussion on the emergency? This is a, uh, an up, we're getting a cartograph upgrade which takes care of our vehicle maintenance and other maintenance records within the city, and this is to put, we, we were, there was a mistake in which budget or which align item it was put in, so this is just amends our appropriations to put it under the right account, and that's why we want it to be an emergency so it can be done immediately. Is there any other discussion? Shannon, would you call the roll on the emergency, please?
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Sorese?
Yes.
Okay, now I'd like to make a motion that we adopt as an emergency, Ordinance Forty-Eight, two thousand and fifteen. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Roden seconds. Discussion. Again, this is a software upgrade. Uh, I think we originally started doing this about ten years ago, and it's the thirty-five thousand dollars is the appropriation that we're putting into the budget. Shannon, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Sorese?
Yes.
The motion passes seven-zero. Now, was that the emergency or was that the?
That was.
Okay, so it passes as an emergency, seven-zero. Thank you. Resolution Forty-Nine, two thousand and fifteen.
A resolution authorizing the continuation of various agreements under the Community Reinvestment Area Program created pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section Three Seven Three Five Point Six Six for real property tax abatement.
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt Resolution Forty-Nine, two thousand and fifteen. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mrs. Stoffer seconds. These are community reinvestment agreements that were reviewed by the Twinsburg Revenue Group that I reported on earlier. Six of the seven are tied into this resolution and lets them go for another year. Is there any other discussion? Shannon, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Sorese?
Yes.
Resolution Forty-Nine, two thousand and fifteen passes seven-zero. Resolution Fifty, two thousand and fifteen.
A resolution amending the Community Reinvestment Area Agreement between the City of Twinsburg and Ganshorn Property LLC as recommended by the Tax Incentive Review Council.
Okay. I move that we adopt Resolution Fifty, two thousand and fifteen. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Sore, Mr. Scafidi seconds. Is there discussion?
This is the agreement that we're modifying, reducing it to fifty percent.
Thank you, Mayor. Shannon, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Sorese?
Yes.
Resolution Fifty, two thousand and fifteen passes seven-zero. Resolution Fifty-One, two thousand and fifteen.
A resolution authorizing the continuation of various agreements to provide tax incentives under the terms and conditions of the Twinsburg Occupancy Program established by Ordinance One Forty-four, two thousand and four.
I move that we adopt Resolution Fifty-One, two thousand and fifteen. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. McDermott seconds. Discussion? These are the Twinsburg occupancy programs, which again, if you move into an existing building, we abate part of your income tax as an economic development tool to generate revenue for the city.
I would just like to mention that this has been a really successful program that the City of Twinsburg has, and we have some great companies that are receiving this, this top, this investment incentive. American Bottling Company, Leanda, Keystone Components, Myers, Verizon, and Light and Cabinet, Windstream. These are companies that have, and they don't always receive a full abatement. It depends on what they're doing there, but we certainly am glad that we've been able to fill up a lot of our vacant buildings through this incentive program. Great job.
Shannon, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Sorese?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Resolution Fifty-One, two thousand and fifteen passes seven-zero. Ordinance Fifty-Two, two thousand and fifteen.
An ordinance accepting the bid of Kavanaugh Building Corporation for the Liberty Sidewalk Project and declaring an emergency.
I make a motion that we place Ordinance Fifty-Two, two thousand and fifteen on its third and final reading, declaring it an emergency. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Scafidi seconds the emergency, but it was close. Discussion on the emergency? Mayor?
They already said my piece on the Sanitary Sewer line.
The reason for the emergency is that we want to get this project going as quickly as possible and have Kavanaugh build this sidewalk program.
Yes, we do.
Shannon, would you call the roll for the emergency, please?
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Sorese?
I'll be recusing myself from this vote because I know the owner of this company.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Okay, the emergency passes six-zero. Now I'd like to make a motion that we adopt as an emergency, Ordinance Fifty-Two, two thousand and fifteen. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mrs. Stoffer seconds. Discussion, please.
This project is six hundred and thirty-four thousand eight hundred dollars, and we are receiving federal grant money in the amount of three hundred eighty thousand seven sixty-five, so the city's cost is a little over two hundred fifty-four thousand for that sidewalk. And I know that it's in a great location and will connect to this Reminderville and the Solon Paths, so we're very, very excited about it. The residents, especially in that area, I know are very excited about it.
Thank you, Mayor. Any other discussion? Shannon, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Sorese?
Again, I'll be recusing myself.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Ordinance Fifty-Two, two thousand and fifteen passes as an emergency, six-zero. Ordinance Fifty Three, Ordinance Fifty Three, two thousand and fifteen.
An ordinance establishing a fixed asset policy for the City of Twinsburg.
Resolution Fifty Four, two thousand and fifteen.
A resolution acknowledging Council's receipt and review of the monthly financial statements submitted by the Finance Department for January, February, and March, two thousand and fifteen.
I make a motion that we adopt Resolution Fifty Four, two thousand and fifteen. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Sorese seconds. For auditing purposes, this is just acknowledgement that Council has received the financial information produced by Ms. House and our Finance Department. Shannon, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Sorese?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.